This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the July 19, 2021 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Meeting called to order. Would you please rise with me if you're able to, please, please. A pleasure to be here today.
And to the Republic for Mr. Sanders, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of this world.
That was a good one. That was a real good. Well, before we start the meeting, it's with a heavy heart of mine, I'd like to read a an event that happened over the weekend. So I'll just go ahead and read it. The city of Vernonia with saddest regret announces the passing of Mr. Bruce McNair on July 18, 2021. Our deepest sympathies to his family and friends. Bruce was an invested member of the Vernonia community throughout his life. His participation and concern in city of Vernonia happenings were extensive. Bruce served as a city budget committee member, city council member, city council president, most recently a cemetery committee chair and Vernonia planning commission member. A great champion of Vernonia citizens has been lost. It is time for the rest of us to step up and continue to work hard for the community he loved. Information and services will be forthcoming, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, are, excuse me, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have one possible one. If council was willing, I'd like to maybe talk about setting a sidewalk workshop and possibly a trees workshop that had been kind of on the back burner for a while.
Sorry, the sidewalks are at the planning commission for the adoption.
Sorry, pardon.
Sidewalks are going through the process to be adopted.
Okay.
They'll be coming back to you guys at the public hearing.
Right.
Trees are separate.
Okay, well, we could just put trees and at least set a date up, maybe a month or six weeks or something.
Okay, any other additions or corrections?
So you're putting it on new business B workshop date set?
Or unfinished A?
Sure.
Which one would it be under technically?
Technically it'll be new business because it wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay, new business A.
We have a new business B.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
We have an A.
Okay, if no other additions or corrections, would anyone like to move to accept the agenda with the one addition?
I'll make a move to accept the agenda with the addition aforementioned.
So move, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Counselor Williams, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor what? Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, are there any presentations tonight? Okay, a little movement right into the mayor's report. The second meeting of every month, our city recognizes outstanding citizens. And it's my turn this, this month of the, month of July, and I gave it quite a bit of thought, and I chose the individuals that stepped up and let me back up before I, I name them. But the month of February, the vaccinations were available, I believe, in February, shortly after the new president was elected. And so there was a lot of confusion. Who would get them, where to get them, who qualified, a lot of confusion. And so as, as time went, their information became available to us in our rural community. And, and so there were some people that really stepped up and, and helped a lot of people get vaccinated. They're here tonight. Except for Donna Webb, I recognize she did a lot of work to help people. Kim Tierney, Cece Bell, and the Miss Burkittville Fire Department really helped our community to help people get vaccinated to those who wanted it. And I was fortunate enough to get my vaccination in March because I'm a school bus driver and school employees and bus drivers made it available early on, so I got mine. I can't remember when Vicky Weller called me, but they, I think they were, they had done one vaccination day at the Vernonia Fire Hall. And shortly after that occurred, Vicky Weller called me up and said, Rick, is there any place other than the Vernonia Fire Hall that we could get vaccinations? So I, I thought of the scout cabin first, so I referred Vicky to Toby and then Toby made it happen for Miss Burkittville to come out on Thursdays. And they're still coming out and giving vaccinations to those who choose to get it. So in, in light of all your efforts to help our community stay safe and return back to normal, I don't know if we ever will, but I'd like to recognize Kim Tierney and Cece Bell and Donna Webb and Miss Burkittville Fire Department. Thank you very much.
There we go.
Scott's not here, can I get you guys' picture?
Yes.
Can I know if you like, who did take the picture?
Squeeze it on, Grant.
Okay, you guys want to get together?
Squeeze it in there.
All right, thank you.
I'm kind of hard of her hearing, can you guys repeat your names?
This is Haley Calmore, she's our director of Public Health Services for Miss Burkittville, and I'm Joe Kessens, P, the fire chief.
Haley, Joe, Cece, Kim, thank you.
Larry Foxman, who's our division chief of EMS, he couldn't be here tonight because of another call, but Larry and Haley are the ones that really put the program together for not just here in Vernonia, but Miss, and we've been out to Jewel, we've been to Rainier, we've been to Napa. We've been all over the place, so class nine, yeah, and Cece and Kim were integral to getting here in Vernonia, so everybody came together.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll pass that on to Larry Forrest, and there's always good people out there at Miss Burkittville.
Thank you.
Expand on this for just a second.
Sure.
I am so upset. In fact, in March, we were really scrambling for appointments, and Donna and I in particular were, were getting up at five in the morning and trying to schedule people, you know, having trouble getting things. And then we learned that Miss Burkittville had gotten a special waiver or something, I don't know how they did it. But Miss Burkittville had a special waiver and they were getting the appointments available on March 15. And Donna and I, well, Donna basically shared it with me, and the two of us started sticking people into the slots. And, but with permission, so we contacted Haley and we said, if you have any extra ones, can we have, because Vernonia is hurting. And Haley said, we'll do what we can for you. And then it was, was two weeks later, we had the first one in Vernonia. And, and I'm just so touched with what Miss Burkittville has done for us and the creativity and the vision that they provide. I think our highest day was on 15th April, but that was not an angel day. So lots and lots of people have vaccinated, and we have so much to thank for this, for the fire department and Larry Foxman for his creative approach to getting that hundred. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, and I, I, you know, certainly was, you know, working to help make that happen, Donna was, and Cece. But Miss Burkittville saved our day, saved our day, so.
2,700 shots and arms, is that correct?
Yeah, this week I think more than 2700, right?
Wow.
And just an extension, I just want to say thank you so much to the whole city of Vernonia for being very welcoming, but people like Ken and Cece especially. I mean, we are friendly neighbors of Vernonia, but we don't know as many people here, and there were, oh, these ladies drove to people's houses. We didn't show up with their appointments and knock on their doors and said, we have an appointment for you, oh, my car, we would start, Cece drove them in. No, we're still in turn, I'm buying people and getting on their trucks, so.
My neighbor was the guy that, that was so excited to get a shot. And, and then when the question came, have you had a vaccination in the last two weeks? Oh, yeah, yeah, I had the shingles shot, and then we went. Oh, I'm so sorry, we can't give you the shot today. Oh, my gosh, it was so crestfallen, but I drove him home and I went back the next day and picked him up, and yeah, so.
No, it was, it was definitely a team effort, so thank you so much for, for this acknowledgement.
Oh, go ahead, Dan. Yeah, I'd like to add, because I got both of my shots, your crew, one down at your fire department and one up here, but you guys went beyond the call of duty, upped up to the plate and got our community, then the Haylen Valley and other places, access, I mean, people were driving to Salem, Portland Convention Center, how convenient for elderly people in this community. You guys really stepped up, but the volunteer hours that your EMT people are putting in down there is, you know, it's a rare breed that can do something like that. It's, I mean, day after day, making time out of their lives. I mean, and very organized, very well run. I have to really off to you. Thank you. Okay, thank you again. Nice meeting you call.
Thank you so much.
Have a safe drive back down the road.
Yes.
Watch out for them flying rocks. You too. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Counselor Committee meeting reports. I have one. I attended the Vernonia senior board meeting last week on Friday, well, actually, July 9. They had a great month at the thrift shop, $7,500. Gross. And they wanted to thank the city of Vernonia for leasing that building to them, they, they made a mention of it. I know our, the lease is coming up in another couple of years, but they did want to, want me to mention it. Thank you for that, because it's a big help for them right now. They did hire a new administrative assistant, her name is Ashley Martinez. I met her at the board meeting, real nice gal. Things are going good, they had 449 June meals, so they're really pumping out a lot of meals out of that kitchen, new kitchen. Still no word yet when they're going to be opening the dining hall. I think it's coming fairly soon, probably sometime early fall, September, I, I kind of look for that to open up. They are having a senior picnic, and it's going to be at the Senior Center on Friday, August 13. And I believe that starts about 11 o'clock or noon, and they will provide all the food, so no potluck or anything. They'll provide all the food. So, next board meeting will be September 10, so, good meeting. Any other committee meeting reports?
None for me.
Okay. All right. Any topics from the floor?
I'd like to speak about planning position position, when you have a chance.
Oh, okay, if you want.
I think she just didn't know to fill out the form, so we can go ahead and.
Okay. Okay, how we work this, you can come to the podium and, yeah, and state your name and address, and we.
Just name.
Oh, just name.
Trying to get rid of that.
Okay, so just state your name.
Judith Short.
Okay, and I'll give you a little bit of history on the Vernonia, or the audience participation. We allow each speaker to, for five minutes to speak. We don't make any decisions there, we just present your, your agenda, and then it'll be recorded, so. Anyway, welcome.
Thank you very much, I love to speak now.
You sure can.
Want to make sure, I moved out to Vernonia in October. We live just to the other side of Big Eddie Campground, in the old cuddled-in place. And we are absolutely loving living out here. I've lived in Hillsborough prior to this for 30 years, and when I moved there, it was like around 38,000 people. It is now 104,000 people. I had served on the planning commission in Hillsborough for eight years, and I only left solely because I was coming here to live. I have been involved in many large decisions, you should have seen the, the input over Kmart, not Kmart, Walmart coming in into Hillsborough. It was, wow, there were almost blows happening, and the stuff over marijuana, that was crazy. And the, the, the interaction from the audience was crazy. And in my eight years as a planning commissioner, I got a chance to participate in some very large decisions with large builders and got to know some of the people and, and watched the South Hillsborough project start. I have a long repertoire, if you call into Hillsborough to find out. The reason I'm here to talk to you is to persuade you. I live at Big, just outside of Big Eddie, and it's eight miles out of town instead of five, and your ordinance says that you can be no more than five. I'm asking for you to reconsider for, at least in light of my experience as a planning commissioner. I am very much pro property rights, very much pro livability. I represented making sure there was enough parking in Hillsborough. Parking is a very small and much desired commodity, and there were some members of the planning commission that had ideas that smaller, smaller amounts of parking will mean fewer people will drive, and fewer people will have cars. Well, call me crazy, I don't think cars are going away, I think fuels are changing. What I try to do as a commissioner is pay attention to what I hear that people really want, and listen to the audience when they come. We had sometimes as many as 1,400 pages of material to read prior to some of our planning commission meetings. Mind-bogglingly dry, but you learn how to do it in an efficient manner. I never begrudge that time, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours I spent giving to my community in the realm of being a planning commissioner. I would hate for myself to lose the opportunity to give that experience to Vernonia. This is my new home, I'm nesting, we took out all the old carpet and put in hardwood and tile, built stairs down to the river so we can put our kayaks in, they're tied up there now. I believe this is my, my, my forever home, and I love living out here, I'm already starting, people are already starting to follow me, because people do when you're an influencer of your community. I've also been involved in helping the Saturday market, Tuesday market, and various, the art walk. I'd love to see something in the art walk type of idea here in Vernonia, and I may try to spearhead something like that. But I, I believe in giving that to my community. I don't want to be a person who watches things happen. I would like to contribute my time toward the betterment of my fellow Vernonians and my new town that I live in. I have two grandchildren, three children, and I have been married for 35 years, I have a high level of commitment. I never miss a meeting unless I had to, no matter how laborious my job as a Realtor was. You guys have a lot of Realtors in Vernonia, I'm just saying. Not open another office until at least one of the offices is gone. But I own my own brokerage in Hillsborough, Phoenix Creep Real Estate, so when you start seeing signs out there, now you have a name and a place to go together. I just invited a bunch of people to come to my home for tea, women, of course, a high, a high tea for women. I did that for 20, 23 years as well as a Hillsborough resident. And I, my mantra, I have no children, I just have my cool car, and I want to give, I need purpose, I need purpose for, for getting up in the morning, and one of the things for me for purpose is to serve my community, and be active and a part and a contributor. So I understand why you have rules like that one, I'm just grateful you could live outside the city limits, and at least one of us, one of your planning commissioners can be that. But it's only three miles, and I'm an active participant in my community, so I'm hoping you may make an allowance due to my extensive experience as a planning commissioner. So I've been involved in, it was a housing needs committee for the city of Hillsborough as well, so I served on that committee among others. So I, I, I'm, I'm trying to be persuasive because I really want to be part of that. So if you could make this allowance, I understand it's three more miles, I understand you have rules, but I also understand in, when you're doing planning for the community, that you have variances and people who come in with one thing that needs to be done, and they go through the process. I'm willing to go through your process, I'm willing to supply you with references, and I think you would find me to be a very dedicated and intelligent, most of the time, member of your, of your commission. So I, I would like to open it up for questions from you, if you have any questions for me. Shoot.
I can't remember your first name.
Judith.
Judith, okay.
I know your place well, I've actually, I think, done some work out there over the years. There was a school teacher that bought it, and it was his dream, his name was Forrest.
Yes.
And he lived there, I, I think, until he passed away, I'm not sure.
No, he's still living, his wife passed away.
Oh, his wife passed.
And then he sold it, basically a fire sale, because he cried every time he came in onto the property, he just doesn't go there anymore.
He loved that place.
Yeah, and we're, we've now got a grip on it, if you drove by it a few times, there's big piles of junk, because we were renovating. And we're still renovating, we probably have at least another six months of renovating to go. But if, if you drive by it, you know, you'll see my green charger in front of it, you'll know I'm home. Come in and knock on the door and see what's up.
Did you say purple charger?
That's one of the original colors from the seventies on the charger, it's got a 8425. So I drive very efficiently, and I always drive slow through town, always.
For town? That's not the lady you were chasing?
I like that term, I drive efficient.
Yeah, but, no, I, I, I really am enjoying being out here, my neighbors are all kind. Did I meet you at the restaurant here a few weeks ago?
Maybe, yes.
I did with Stella, have you liked? Yeah, so I'm trying to get out in members of my community, but we've been elbow deep in trying to get this done. I'm a Realtor, this is one of the busiest times of the year for me. But I already have people calling me from east of here, interested in property out here, and one of my friends has already bought a place.
No.
So I think you would find me to be a reliable member that of the council, excuse me, of the commission that would attend regularly, I just don't miss.
Thank you, Judith, for being here tonight, and it's a pleasure meeting you, welcome to the community.
I'll be disappointed, but I won't be mad, okay? Rest assured, you can, you can plan on a very involved.
I'm sure we'll have a discussion about it.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and leave you folks, so you can go on with business, thank you for hearing me, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Judith.
Nice to meet you.
Meeting you.
I'm sure we'll see each other at some event, because I like to.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
You too, thank you. Consent agenda for acceptance. Parks Committee meeting minutes, May 2021. Any discussion on those meeting minutes or questions?
I don't have any questions about the meeting minutes, maybe some updates later, but.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to accept? I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda for acceptance. Motion's been made, is there a second? I'll say, second for name, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Allen? Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor what?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, consent agenda for approval, City Council meeting minutes for July 6, 2021. Correct. Where was the flags? The cemetery.
So I just have the header, July 4. Header says July 7.
When did you say, something about cemetery?
Cemetery flags, yeah, page five.
I know I read that. Yeah, I think maybe.
It's on page five, C.
Misunderstood, I think. Yeah, it was, he explained that the extendable pole would be nice as they wouldn't require all the holes re, redone and the.
That's not correct.
Yeah, that wasn't correct.
So what does it mean to say?
It's under C on page five.
Yeah.
And line 1, 2, 3. That the extendable poles would be nice as they wouldn't require all the holes to be redone.
But they would require, and I think I said.
Some of your thoughts.
Wouldn't require the holes to be redone. Yeah, the sleeves with the concrete would have to be torn out or put another one next to it and not use them, yeah, so.
I have a question as well. Staff will purchase pole, I thought it was 200.
That's not what the motion ended up being.
It was 200 per Pete, per pole, two types of poles, 200 apiece. So the motion came in to a maximum 400 to get the two demo poles.
Yeah. So if it's less than that's fantastic.
Yeah.
But it was up to.
They might try an extended one, they might try two different wall thicknesses of rigid, we're not quite flush that one out yet, probably.
I think the recommendation was 200, but they upped it in order to allow.
I think Ben was going to double check the inside diameter of several of those sleeves to make, but I think the old poles were inch and a half, probably just double check that, because those go in good, easy, yeah. I think the 1.9 millimeter would be a little tight, the ones I priced, but maybe we could find something in a standard tape measure type diameter.
Okay, any other corrections, discretion?
I do, I, I think I do have another question, are these sidewalk corrections, the ones that we just put in, and they didn't like them, is that?
Do I remember that?
Where are you at, Grant?
Action item summary, staff will schedule the O dot sidewalk inspection.
Are those the ones that we just put in and they didn't like them?
Yes. They, we put in the ADA standard, and because of where that intersection sits, they wanted a different, some different things. On, in addition, yes.
That it just one way?
Has to be both ways. Even though there's not a crosswalk there, even though you wouldn't be able to see someone crossing the highway there.
Perfect, there you go. Okay. Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the minutes with the discussion.
With the one change, changing it from as to if?
Yeah, okay, I would like to make the motion that we accept the minutes with that change.
For a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen? Councilwoman Allen.
Hi.
Councilwoman Williams.
Hi.
Councilwoman Webb.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi. Any unfinished, unfinished business? Okay, moving on to new business. Parks Committee application found on page nine. Has everyone read the application?
Yes.
Well, I think that'll be a pretty good addition to the Parks Committee. Very good addition.
More trees, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, love trees.
Any discussion about the applicant?
Going pretty well. Okay, good candidate.
Yep, my mayor's league, we have consensus from the city, Burnoni City Councils to accept this application.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine. Well, with the total consent from the Burnoni City Council, I will appoint Maggie Alpatin to the Parks Committee. Congratulations. I wish she was here. Pass that on to her. Trees workshop.
We're kind of busy in July, so we got jamboree, so I thought, you know, we look at four to six weeks out or something.
That would work. So we have another work session, sorry. We have another work session for the ARPA stuff that we're gonna bring to you guys early August to schedule, but we're holding off because the city manager's evaluation. I didn't want to put too much at the beginning of August, so keep that in mind when you book the tree one. You know, I have some other.
I don't want to get too close to the holiday, probably.
The holiday.
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Oh, so you have ARPA, the follow-up of that. The, this twenty-fourth, next Monday, you have your meeting about my evaluation. Then you'll have to schedule the time to talk to me about it.
Yep.
ARPA and trees and what was the other one?
I think that's it. We just weren't sure if they were gonna be.
Oh, we were talking about doing the priorities at some point, resetting, come out of the evaluation and make sure we're all on the same page as far as the priorities for what's in the budget, what rises to the top.
I didn't bring my calendar with me, so we need to take a beat. So we're pretty much done through July, right?
Yeah, Monday you have one unless you want to do it that week.
Council, you had something for the ninth kind of in mind, Stephanie?
Well, I don't know. That's the thing. You guys have potentially two more work or executive sessions for the.
How about the twenty-third? And we could always bump it if.
August?
Yeah, Monday.
Is that the Monday?
That's the.
That's the fourth.
Fourth Monday.
I don't know of any complex. I just want to make sure that you guys knew what your load was that was coming.
I mean, it's not super high on the list. If something comes up, we could always change it. That's, that looks okay for me. I don't know about you guys.
So Monday, August fourth, is that?
Third.
At six, six thirty?
Ah, sure. I can make that.
Work for everybody.
Six thirty?
So just trying to brainstorm here a little. Think that tree thing will take two hours?
Probably.
Because my only other thing is there's probably a few more workshops that we need to mull over, whether we want to have or not as a council, some things that came up during budget. As, you know, the wage increase schedules and things like that. Thought I heard a lot of people expressing they wanted to explore further.
You guys, you had two or three things you wanted to hammer up and, or have staff present, bring forward stuff, yeah.
So, I mean, in those, we have some time. But I just thought during that workshop, if we kind of had our list of things that we want to have workshops on in the back of our head, prioritize at that time what needs to float to the top.
You could do a priorities and add in the priorities, work session priorities.
Yeah. Well, that's what it is. It's kind of a workshop priority.
Yeah.
We talk about a lot of things that we kind of sometimes forget to schedule something for it, but we did talk about that, how to, how to control that. Yeah, there were several things that.
Yeah, I'd have to go back to my, my.
Yeah.
And listen. But one was you guys wanted to be presented with the potential of like steps. So it was a known program for the incremental things, so stuff like that.
Right.
I forget, there is other things I'm not thinking of them right now.
I mean, the, what do we, what do we do? The cola and the other, what's the other?
Merit.
Merit, cola, merit and. And then we were talking, did we mention, is there steps on like the water department when they get one certification, another certification? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, that's just a stipend each month for their certification. I think it's twenty-five dollars.
That's not a big incentive, is it?
Nobody has steps except does the police department.
Yeah.
They're the only ones.
With a step, yeah.
That's a, that's a union contract. Yeah.
But we, Angie and I have already started gathering samples from other cities because they often time I found that they use resolutions and they just adopt it. Then try first. That's where everybody is.
Well, who is represented by the union in our city?
Police.
Uh?
Just police.
All the police?
No, just.
The police.
Yeah.
You're not because you're management.
Right. Nor Sean. Sean's not represented at all.
So you guys have just a, a contract with the city then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And who does that contract? You just said.
Originally, he's had the same contract with who?
Mine was two thousand eleven.
Who is your?
This one.
Yeah, it's under bill.
So nothing's changed in that amount of time?
Not in the contract, but the contract doesn't have a wage. It's.
Yeah, it does.
Well, but it doesn't have a wage that we've, it's not like you're stuck here. You haven't been stuck there.
No, I had, I, I colas.
Yeah.
And then last year.
But anyhow, I think, yeah, there's a few things. I just was wondering there in that meeting if, or we need to have a separate one. I mean, that would be, we could start and.
I almost think all the things from budget that were going to be theories, things put into practice, almost deserve just their own.
I mean, they do, but I mean, as far as prioritizing, I was just having a meeting to get the list of them and prioritize them.
Oh, sure.
You know, and that probably would only take forty-five minutes, maybe.
Okay, we can do that.
Oh, I was thinking.
Bring forward the.
And then if it doesn't work, we'll just schedule it.
Okay.
But it's just in case if we have time.
Bring that to the August twenty-third.
Yeah.
Okay.
And everybody forward their ideas to. I don't care. I could stay three hours.
What do you mean forward their ideas? I thought we were getting from what you talked about at budget and bringing you those items and that's what you guys were gonna put together. We have the minutes and the recordings.
Okay, well, that's good. I don't know if there's any other workshop ideas. I don't know.
Oh, I didn't, okay. I'm, I was confused.
Okay.
And we're happy to bring you guys forward what you discussed in budget to prioritize those things and how you want to handle them. What are the other ideas?
Just bring a list to the meeting.
Yeah, I, I'm just. Maybe you can give us an update on some of the things that have kind of stalled out with, with match rate type stuff. That's just, we haven't really had an update on in a while.
I could update you on that.
Yeah.
Nothing stalled because I'm killing it.
Well, for you.
Please update on the. Will this do all my planning progress? I can.
You just said you could update.
But what do you want? Okay, so we're.
I'm just curious of how we're doing on the rearranging of the boundaries.
So the UGB is, the application is being reformatted because coming from a different planner and be, going to be smidgen to county. However, because we have the D annexation, we're gonna try and rock and roll that and add that to our application with the county for the UGB change. That way it's not being applied for twice. So he'll need to be out of the city limits and the UGB. So we're gonna try and kick him out now, Mr. Dixon, who was here a couple of weeks ago. And then he'll piggyback on our UGB change. So it's not stalled. It's being reformatted. We're knocking this one out and we're gonna add it and then apply.
I just meant stalled and I haven't had an update and I know we're switching planners and we really haven't talked about it much.
I have been a thorn in their side, making sure that nothing gets forgotten or dropped. So we have a lot of planning things that are happening. Luckily, a good portion of them right now are on the applicant's table. So we're waiting for more information from them. It's not that we're delayed. But we have, we have a lot line adjustment, two variances, a street vacation, street dedication. We have two new houses. We have three different code updates, the UGB change, the annexation. I'm gonna have to look at my list. There's gotta be some more.
There is some more.
And then you said you didn't want to make a sidewalk.
So that's going through the planning commission process. So that's gonna go to planning commission as a code update. They're gonna have their public hearing, have a work session if they need it, likely not. Then it'll be forwarded. They'll make a motion to approve it. ordinance will come to you guys for approval. You'll either approve it as you guys basically already formatted it, or you'll schedule a work session to continue that discussion.
Yes.
So going through the process to be adopted.
So once you guys adopt it, then people, the two options are put in a sidewalk or you file, fall under these specific circumstances to pay a fee in lieu.
That's the two little things that Webb wanted there before Dan, right, about.
They're gonna have.
I don't know. That was up to the planning commission.
They're gonna pass those to the south.
Yeah. And then same, kind of simultaneously, Lower Columbia Engineering is doing all those kind of working on the spec sheets so that we have the schematic for what we're gonna require for each thing, like St. Helens does with other towns. So our public work standards don't currently have them really.
Right.
See for the labor person to understand what the requirements are. So they're working on that stuff still.
Where you can be able to just hand it to them.
Right.
Sapper.
So my mayor. So our quarterly project priority list of meeting, I mean, a workshop that we do, what works best for you at the beginning of the quarters or toward the end of the quarters?
I would like it if we would just schedule it the whole year, figure out what dates they're gonna be on for the whole next year because I keep saying I need to schedule a priorities meeting with you guys and it just keeps getting kicked down.
Yeah.
Because there's other things pressing. So if we started the calendar year with these are the four dates we're gonna meet and talk about the city's happenings and good and bad and what's behind and what's finished early, I would like them set up so that none of us can get out of them. So that's just, we know it's happening because we still haven't had one, which would have been the June.
Yeah.
I, I think I asked in May, hey, we need to schedule it. And then there was other stuff and then it just kept going and we still haven't had the June priorities meeting, which would have set us up better for my evaluation because there would have been the back and forth of what's going on before you guys are trying to rate my performance. So if we could set them up the beginning of the year, the four dates, that would be really.
They were the second week.
Each quarter month.
Quarter.
That Monday.
Second week of March, second week of June, second week of, what is it, October, September.
Okay, we could do that the second Monday of those, those months, the quarter months.
Kind of like paying yourself first and scheduling on those. Because I agree with you. That's part of our, I mean, I'm envisioning, you know, what we've been talking about, that was one of Bruce's visions, was to kind of change our evaluation process and, yeah, I definitely, it helps with that evaluation process, that back and forth.
I feel like we haven't talked in like four months of all the stuff that's going on or done. And then we're gonna, you guys are meeting next Monday to see how I'm doing. And I'm like, I haven't even told you anything about I'm doing. So it's all kind of just what you've heard or picked up piecemeal and.
I'm wondering if there's not actually even missing something here because you have so much more that's got dumped on your plate this year. There's things that you have that you're actively working on that aren't even on our priority list.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll see what I'm saying, guys. It's, and I know you've said something, but you know, we may need to change some priorities on that.
Or at least wanting.
On the date to work.
Right, because I feel like I'm at the stage since we didn't meet in June, that we're all spinning all the plates, trying to keep every project moving forward kind of simultaneously, where if we knew what was really important of the things we had going on, we could let some kind of sit. And it's just like Wendy coming in here mad. We got the money in January after three years of trying to get the money from the government and she's mad I haven't done it all in six weeks. Well, her thing came into an already set list of priorities that didn't include it because it wasn't funded at that point. Does that make sense? So it's like, there's a lot of those weird things where I'm like, I'm working on it, but I got like eight, eight things way ahead of that. And so it's hard to.
Can I ask you a question about Ruben?
Yeah.
Because I do hear quite a bit that we're waiting for Ruben. Is he too busy for us to reply in timely matters on issues that are small? I'm saying, I'm not saying small, but.
You mean like the contract with Wendy?
That stuff and maybe Washington County stuff. I just wondered if you're, because sometimes it seems like you say you're delayed waiting for legal counsel. I don't know. I don't know how fast it goes, you know?
He's pretty timely. The tricky part is, is that he'll send it back, there'll be another change, it'll go back to him. So it's more than one time that he sees something and blesses it typically. Like Chief and I were doing stuff and Ruben's had to handle it because of tweaks probably fifteen times, just because the, the other party will say something or like a clap up. The attorney emailed me when, once they have attorneys, I'm not supposed to be in it. So I forward that to him. He deals with the attorney. The attorney still emails me. So there's just, it's just like weird stuff you can't. He's pretty timely when we need something ASAP, but he's got, we've got him dealing with a lot of things and touching a lot of things in the city right now just because it's a legal thing, someone's got a lawyer, it's a contract, he wants to make sure it's the best interest of the city.
And we're not his only client, I'm sure.
Well, I think their firm only has three clients, Hood River, us and.
Condon was one.
Yeah, Condon, I think.
Hood River's pretty large.
It is, but he has a partner, so it's not like a one man hand either. And he has, you know, office staff, so um, I'm not super worried. I mean, it does, it doesn't, I don't think he's behind for us. If he, if he was, I'd be mad about it, I guess. But um, yeah, I, I feel like he does a good job for us. And he's always looking out for in contracts, how we don't inadvertently get taken or somebody has a loophole where we don't get what we want in the end, so.
Yeah, I don't mean to sidetrack, but you did mention the skate park. And we do know that our donor was pretty hoping to have it done by Jamboree, which was probably a lofty goal, I'll even admit that. But uh, and you, I think you had made the statement, it was hoping to go out to bid by May 15th and then it's June and now it's July.
Yeah.
It's coming up in August. So at some point, you know, she's going to be back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little frustrated because she's really, um, and rightfully so, has the blinders on.
Well, sure, this.
This is it, right? And the reality of that is not reality in, in here with the stuff the city's got going on.
So um, I guess my concern is just, uh, I think if she's updated and our donor is updated once in a while instead of the nothing. And I'm not saying there's nothing coming from City Hall, but sometimes uh, maybe a, a little communication would kind of calm them. Let them know what the process is or something, I don't know, you probably do do that.
I do do that. It doesn't seem to squell the, the ambition.
And I'm not saying it's a more priority than what our goal, our immediate city goals are. It's just a big one for the community, which is going to suck some time from you and.
Yeah.
And we realize that. I think I told her it'll get done. It might be at the, when you're just about out of breath, but all of a sudden there will be the equipment and it'll get it done, but.
Yeah.
That's been part of my learning experience is things move a little slower when a million people are involved, so.
Well, and when there's a mil, I mean, I, I was talking to Counselor Webb about what's coming up. What, what was added into the budget as projects? And we did this brainstorming kind of sickening list of everything that was in our heads and it's gigantic.
There's a lot of maintenance issues that have been on deferment and we.
Well, that's not even on my list, JR. I'm talking about like Lakeview Sewer, Clatsup Sewer, Weed Avenue Storm, CDBG on Springboard, smoke testing. Like there's a list a mile long and so I need you guys to be like, hey, it's okay, these are the things we want you to work on. And we understand if A, B, or C isn't happening. But right now we're kind of in the weird spot where we're trying to keep everything rolling and it's just not efficient.
Really, we should probably have a talk before Counselor Allen beats on you in a review for no reason, right?
Well, that's why I'm saying I wanted to meet with you guys in June to show you, hey, once you adopt this budget, this is now your list of things you want the 21 people that work for the city to accomplish in the fiscal year.
Be tomorrow night if you really want to have that meeting.
If you wanted to come talk about it, I'm happy to. I've got a huge list.
But I think as a council.
Oh, yeah, as a council.
I can't look at that quickly.
Oh, because we have to have 24 hours.
Right, if, if you really think it'd be helpful, it probably would be for, for all of us if we can get it in before.
Yeah, I mean, how timely could you be prepared to bring that forward?
Pretty quickly, because I worked on, yeah. Well, you guys are meeting Monday though for my.
We could just switch it out, make that one your, the first step. Cause really that's part of the step, we could make that priorities. And then you can schedule your first evaluation meeting after that connected.
Yeah. I could bring you it on Monday.
If you guys want to do that.
See.
And want to swap it around, yeah?
If it's legit, it would still follow the resolution.
Well, and I could just bring you it, update it. Maybe we don't put it in order if you guys still wanted to have your evaluation meeting to keep, does that make sense? I don't know. Because I think putting it in order and everyone having their different feeling about it, maybe would be its own thing. But I want to update you on where everything's at, what's going on, what you've added for next, from the budget, all of that stuff.
We need that for the evaluation process with, I mean.
I'd like, I'd just assume keep those two meetings separate. Just have the.
The priority.
Extend the valuation at another day and have an updated meeting on, on Monday.
Okay.
The second meeting.
Wouldn't you guys?
In August.
Oh, shoot, there was, talking about making that the evaluation? Next Monday?
Next Monday was the, right, the, the CA's evaluation. We're saying we could make it a workshop.
You could push it out.
Yeah.
So we're talking July 26th.
That's Monday.
Whichever.
So make that one the priorities work session and then what about the second Monday in August? For the CA evaluation? Or do you want to do it a different day of the week?
Is that the eighth or ninth or 10th or something?
I don't have that.
Night. I believe.
Ninth?
Yeah, the ninth.
Is that a conflict with anybody, vacation or anything?
No, I just know the wife's really itching to go and it's going to be the first part of August.
Okay, so can I ask a weird question?
Yes.
Your evaluation meeting, you're all coming with that form filled out?
Yeah.
So could.
I haven't filled out that form.
No, I know. I'm saying when you normally come, you're all going to come, you're going to tabulate it on one, you're going to put some comments.
Right.
And then you're going to meet with me at, at another time to go over it. So couldn't we do the priorities one? And then we just plan on a two hour one where you guys meet the first hour and tabulate and the second hour you talk to me? And then we just really get all of it done in two meetings?
That would work.
I mean, if you're, if everyone comes after the priorities and I've discussed all the things, if they, you went home and filled out what your gut feel is right then from hearing everything you heard and put your comments, then when you came together, it shouldn't take you too long to tally.
That first tally meeting for take us brutal.
No.
Cause then you could invite me to come at 7:30 for my formal evaluation or something. And we could do that, we could do the formal evaluation the ninth. So we'd have a week in between that we did, you didn't have anything about evaluations. Does that work?
That works for me, because I, I think it's good for me because of COVID and we haven't been down here much. We really, it's easy to feel separate from what's really going on and.
Would that work for you?
Things that are accomplished or not.
I just hope it does. I don't have no firm plans as of now, so.
Well, bowl it over and if somebody really has a conflict, we could push it out another week for this part two meeting.
Yeah, you can push the part two to whenever you want.
Going anywhere, so.
So we'll just change the 26th to the priorities work session.
Right.
Okay.
We're on. And so we are going to have a, a workshop on August 23rd, right? That's the fourth meeting. Okay.
Which, which workshop is that one?
Trees.
Just trees.
That's August.
We're talking July 26th now or the 27th?
Monday, the 26th.
26th is going to be a.
Who says?
Update.
Priorities.
Priority.
So that will solve having to have the budget things come because they'll be on the list of projects of the city staff. The, the scale for the wages, all the things would be on the list anyway.
Oh, you think they would be? Okay.
Well, you've tasked us to do stuff, so it should be on the big list.
And if not, you're going to say, nope, scratch that out.
Yeah, if you want someone else to do it, hey, take that away.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're ready to move on to business from the departments.
Well, I did, I did give you a report this time. It was, I got it, got it here. Um, month of June, 155 calls for service, nothing real significant in there. For the fiscal year, um, we ended it roughly 2,137 calls. We July 1st and July 1st. Couple of months back, I applied for a traffic grant to Oregon Department of Transportation. We got notified yesterday that we were accepted for that grant of $7,000 um, of high visibility traffic enforcement and that includes $2,000 for impaired driving, $2,000 for speed enforcement, $2,000 for seatbelt enforcement and a thousand dollars for distracted drive. I have to, I've already sent a letter of acceptance back because I'm just waiting to hear from them. But as soon as everything's approved, we'll be able to start using those funds. Those, October 1st. And we have until September 30th to use those up. And I have Intel Picnic will be the August 20th through the 22nd. We're planning to attend that for a few hours on each date. Staff depending. If I have enough bodies to do it at that point. So that's where I'm at.
Could you repeat that last part?
If I have enough bodies to attend.
The 10 what though? I missed it.
Intel Picnic.
Oh.
They pay a.
Up here, yeah.
Are they that rowdy?
What's that?
Are they that rowdy?
Yeah, they only usually take one of us, but I've got a guy on vacation and we're already kind of shortish. So um, whether or not I will go to those myself is up in the air as of now. Now I feel on the 20th.
Easy route, gets a lot of traffic that weekend.
It's, it's a tough.
I worked there one weekend.
We, we generally spend a lot of time on State Avenue because it's, it, it is a raceway on me Intel Picnic days. Without a doubt, they're 55, 60 miles an hour some of them.
Any, any update on, on Jamboree help?
Uh, OSP is trying to put some bodies together. They're hoping to get a few, but they haven't confirmed as of yet. Kind of looking like it's probably, it's going to be the four of us and I kind of expect a few extras to kind of show up. But I, I don't know what times or how many yet.
Few extras from whom?
Oregon State Police.
Oh.
Anything from the county?
Uh, nothing confirmed as of yet. I know Sergeant Thompson was looking at the schedules and mowing it over, but he hasn't gotten back to me either. We'll see.
I have a question, if you're done.
Go ahead.
Uh, can you explain your maintenance program on your vehicles? Who's responsible and where do they go? Do we like accounts and stuff?
Most, we, we have a couple of local accounts. R and R usually does the majority of the oil change kind of stuff.
Right here?
Yeah. Lardy's does some work. Um, and then the vehicles that are under warranty will go to the dealership.
So is it up to each officer to maintain their vehicles? Is that how you do it?
Uh, well, when, when they're coming up, as far as the general maintenance is concerned, when you come up on the mileage that they're telling us car needs oil change, so we get it done.
You just go, oh, you go by a mileage schedule for like all the stuff?
Pretty much unless something else major goes wrong and then sometimes they, on a couple of different occasions where we actually had a vehicle at the dealership and some, something else was being fixed, we went ahead and had the service done then because it was already there.
Yeah, I know that could be a challenge. I got a lot of trucks coming and going, tell everybody you need to take care of your vehicles.
And Sean, Sean generally is, is the, the one that handles the vehicle maintenance stuff. So he's usually the one going, okay, what's, what's next? Is it coming up? And he's keeping the records and stuff on that, so.
I was going to ask about Jamboree, but Mayor beat me to it, so.
I'm probably going to be sleeping here during Jamboree.
Oh.
Wouldn't be the first time.
No.
Just don't sleep in your car, they'll think you're.
No.
Oh, no.
I got room in my office for a cot.
I have a question, I, I, I hope it's appropriate. I was made aware by a citizen that there was someone back in our community that has a history of lifting things. Are you aware of that? Is that true?
I would have to know who you're talking about.
See, I don't know who it is, except I heard that this person was back in the community. Maybe you just haven't apprehended them yet, or maybe it's just a rumor, I don't.
It was somebody that was recently arrested. Well, they were, they were arrested and released from jail and he's back in the community. And as far as I know, we're not looking at him for anything specific as of yet, but he hasn't been out very long.
Thank you.
Yep.
Congratulations on your grant.
Yeah.
You're.
I wasn't sure we were even going to consider for that one this year.
Oh yeah, what was the big hurry that busted my windshield Friday?
Cause it was a vernon new police coming this, I'm scared.
I'll pass it there, he's flying this way, lights inside, not sirens, lights were going and bang.
It'd been the eighth street?
No, from the rock.
No kidding? Now that, what, which day was it?
Friday at 12:10.
And that was a mental health issue that was being very uncooperative with me.
Oh, you were there?
Yeah.
So it was a backup.
State Police and.
Looked like Hibbs cruising along.
Yeah.
Tell Hibbs thank you, I'll send him the $87 bill.
$87, that's cheap.
Oh, that's cheap. That's if, that's if the repair works, right?
I think it works, it works really well.
That's what I've heard.
Fingernail polish?
Clear fingernail polish, really just stops it from running.
Oh, they're going to inject something, try to, I don't know what they're going to do.
Yeah, that resin.
I've been going out of my way, you know, like I drive timber.
Getting away from there.
I go seven mile loop to cut off half of it to Scappus. And we're cruising along, two log trucks go by and they were not going too fast. I was way over and I told my wife, we just gotta go another mile, we're going to the fair, then bang. I was like, wouldn't you know it.
Murphy's.
Was it your wind, was your windshield dirty? Was your windshield dirty?
Dirty?
Yeah, you might've just needed a new windshield because it was dirty.
No. No, it was spotless.
Thank you, chief.
They used to be cheap. They aren't cheap anymore.
Are they?
We're going to move on to ordinances and resolutions. Thank you, chief. Any correspondence?
We have none.
Okay, city administrator.
So I apologize for not having a printed uh version. Um, I wanted to let you guys all know, we did receive the CDBG award for designing the Springboard Sewer Project. So um, we had our first kickoff meeting this morning. We're going to file some paperwork that allows us to start work. You have to get CDBG's permission to start some exemptive work. One would be environmental review to make sure we're not impacting anything in the environment. And then the second would be the design review and grant administration. So we're going to file the exemption paperwork and that will allow us to start working. Typically, the contract to be signed doesn't show up until like September. So that's why we think it's worthwhile to file the paperwork and let the engineers start doing their environmental review right now. So then when the contract's here and ready and we sign it, we can get rolling with the design early. Public Works will be crack sealing streets around town. They've taken on the project and um, working with Dale went and did some ground roofing of the streets uh, with the help, Ben's mapping help. And so they've identified the areas that needed the most, that it's going to do the most good, that aren't too far gone. And so there, you'll see them out and about doing the crack sealing. Almost all of our products, I'm just waiting for the hanging basket brackets. But almost all the products are here for the Travel Oregon Grant. They were working on installing the water drinking fountain today. I didn't even notice when I drove by if it's there yet. They were hoping that it would.
J.C. Penney's?
Yeah. Yeah, so um, and then, yeah, we're just kind of brainstorming all of the stuff that's coming down the pike for Public Works, City Hall and getting that all organized so that we can be more efficient. Cause there's a lot going on in this town. Um, I am going to be returning, so I did, I talked to Counselor Webb today because he has an in with someone that was part of writing the letter that Mr. Kibben wrote me for the senior center that you brought me.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I'm, we're going to, I'm going to write him a response letter. I'm probably not going to price out what the options cost to wall it in until we try the acoustic paneling first to see if that solves the noise problem. And then following that, if it doesn't, I believe it will, because does it in industrial capacities too? But if it doesn't solve the problem, then I'll present them with what it would cost. Because really, because it's not a requirement of our building, they as the tenant will have to pay. So the board will need to know what it would cost if we did that stuff. But I am going to respond. The other thing is, is we got another letter from Mrs. Jan Bernardi discussing the property by the water plant. And I sent it to Ruben because she's requesting that we lease her the property. Lease it to her, but I double checked with Ruben and since we're in a current agreement with Eleanor, we can't make any decision other than what our agreement with Eleanor says. So I'm going to be responding to Jan that until that agreement is finished, um, we could, the city couldn't even entertain going into a different agreement. And so I'll be responding to her. So if anybody hears from Jan or has heard from Jan that she didn't get a response, I finally got all the clarification about what, how we should do it if you ever want to choose to do something different. And it has to be once the Eleanor agreement is null and void.
Does that include Eleanor coming in and wishing it null and void?
I don't think she has the right to do that. It would have to be her passing in the agreement. Cause we purchased it, we paid money for it.
Right. Right.
So it's ours. Um but the with the condition that as long as she's alive, her family has the right to lease that area. Use it. So I don't know that her coming in, I don't think she would come in maybe is what I'd like to say. Because it really would be between children. Cause could potentially cause issue.
You know, and I'm hearing rumors that that lease was for stabling horses directly.
Um it says use of the area, but it does it does mention horses in the agreement. They don't have horses anymore, but.
Oh, I was just wondering if it was specifically for horses back then.
No, they were mentioned in it as that was the first and other uses.
Oh, and other uses.
So they're allowed to hang out at the river, use that area that they've always used down there. Um and they the little shed, I think either fell over or well, somebody took down the old little shed, one of the old little sheds that I think is where the horses kind of stood in or hay was put or something was before my time.
Yeah, I don't really know nothing about it except for what has come to council.
Yeah, so I just wanted you guys to know that that it's not that it we just gotta wait for one agreement before you entertain the idea of a new agreement.
Right.
Any questions for me?
I have been driving by the uh new signs on the corner with the trees and stuff over here, the old west story, the parking lot. Uh one of the trees is dead.
Mm-hmm.
It 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 got mowed recently, but it it doesn't look like it's being cared for.
The like the weeds have grown?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we hadn't been doing any weed whacking with the dryer temperatures, a lot of that. Tim's been mowing, but if you've ever seen him mow when it's hot, it's like super slow. So there's no, he's like worried he's gonna catch the whole park on fire. Um but I just um the one tree I called the nursery, it's they don't believe it's probably dead even though it didn't bloom. Um so they're supposed to be replacing it for us.
It looks dead.
Yeah, it does look dead. But then the ones in Hawkins Park or in Spencer Park, those two cat surgery trees, those aren't dead and they look dead. So it's like with the heat, so much things, so many things got such um so I wasn't gonna replace that one, Grant, till the heat isn't here.
Right.
With the new guy.
The fall.
Yeah, so he can stay in the field. That means nursery. Get the new one. But yeah, I'll double check on the upkeep because it should be at least weed whacked when even if they have to do it early before it's hot out and there's not the.
Yeah, first job in the morning.
Right.
That's cool.
So and to that point, um in years past, can you refresh our memory? We used to hire a couple of part-time workers.
We used to hire one.
It seemed like we had like three people mowing there for a while, but.
Well, there probably was three, but two were probably our employees and one extra. We have hired a in the past, an hourly just mowing person. Um with Mitch kind of taking the cemetery on and the other fix it's Public Works. Tim, along with the younger Public Works uh workers have been keeping up on the mowing. It's probably just that's out of sight, out of mind for them. But the parks and stuff have been mowed and open spaces have been knocked down and I don't know other than.
The lake looked like he got a little behind down there, but and again, I think it's some of it. He doesn't probably want to mow it because he's afraid he'd catch it on fire right now. Some of that's pretty tall along the track, but he he and I know he had a mower issue there the one day. I said, it was up and he was.
And he and he was on vacation.
Oh, okay.
So it's.
And I was wondering too if the trees at Hawkins and that took quite a bit of time.
That did.
Helping in there that maybe he got set back a little bit.
And at this point, we're really not writing up anyone for tall weeds or grass just because we kind of don't want everyone and their brother out there with weed whackers and lawn mowers and somebody sets up a blaze. But uh because we're not just gonna harp hound people for that for right now. But our stuff should be looking better.
Yeah, I just was I I envision moving into the future here that and that's kind of one of the reasons I'm kind of pushing that little campground at the lake. Just the revenue off of that could hire part-time summer help really that I think help.
I think you're on to something there. I was thinking after we left that meeting the other day, we ought to look at that uh Recovery Act money, just funding that complete campground done because it's gonna make generate revenue right after and that would that would fall under the tourism. Instead of just a thousand or two to start hacking it out, we just complete the thing with and get people camping in there in decent places. And that would be revenue coming into the lake nonstop.
When you told me that the finish date on that is what, twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-four. December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four is when all the ARPA money has to be spent. So we have time.
Do yeah, and do we have to tell them on this first shot that we're getting what we're allocating it all to by a certain date or we just receive that amount of allocation and we?
So you you turn it into your online under the certain criteria, little descriptive, this is what it is, that kind of thing. It's more of just a reporting capacity.
But we don't have a timeline. We have to meet to have that report to them. You see?
Once you are, once you trigger starting to spend the money, then you have to do regular reports. Do, but we haven't spent any of the money, so we aren't triggering.
Yeah.
Reporting.
And I guess to your point, I mean, I'm I'm just envisioning and hopefully the Parks Committee moves along on that and um if we have the cat down there doing the work for the tree planting, which will be probably depending on whether it might be October.
If the weather does.
Probably once we get some moisture on the ground because I don't want them down here in that hay field. Piece of equipment will burn up what we have. Um but when you got a cat there, it would make sense to walk her down there, do the other because we're gonna be right next door to it. Um I'm that's just an idea. There again, we gotta go through the.
Yeah, if they have the. Plan ready by then, yeah.
But by then, if we had enough of the plan to know what our grading thing is, we just do knock them both out at the same time. So and then we see where we get with what we have. And we could turn around. If we haven't allocated all that funding, we can allocate. It's not gonna take a lot of funding to do that. I mean, it's basically grading and rocking and probably some um planting of some trees and shrubs to break the campsite apart type of thing.
There's a water line somewhere we could run a water over. I'd have to look at the.
There isn't water on that side.
I don't think so.
And we talked about that because it would just depend on what amenities you're trying to have right there.
Well, we're not talking huge. Uh yeah, yeah, I just thought figured if there was something halfway closed and we're gonna. If there was one stand pipe there where people could get water, it'd be nice.
Well, and that's something we could maybe adapt up there at the restroom area that where of course then we'll have people filling up their jugs from everywhere, but um I don't know, it's something to think about. And I think when we lay that out, you know, think about the design that future we would add those amenities in there and not how we could get in there about tearing up a lot of what we already constructed.
Yes.
Maybe bring it in from the back sides. Everything. Thing. I think it would generate some revenue.
I had a crazy thought. What are the plans for the old lot across the street from Grace Fellowship? Where the house was recently burned?
Um it's sold, isn't it?
Yeah, it's privately owned.
It's privately owned now.
It can be rebuilt on?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I think it's coming up for sale again.
It'd have to be lifted, you know, elevated.
Yeah, because every time I've driven by there, I thought, you know, the way that is laid out, it would be so easy during the winter when it snows to spray some water on there and have a little local skating. Well, I mean, kids need stuff to do. If they can't be in school, they're either gonna get in trouble or play. That would be perfect. Like it's the way it's.
Yeah.
Down and everything.
Or you just have a every snowstorm, you just close off Nahalem and let the kids sled.
Yeah.
That's what anyway, right? But that's what my kids do.
Oh, yeah.
Go to Cherry Street, go to Nahalem, hit a hill, the school, yeah.
Okay, scratch that idea. Okay, any other questions for Josette?
Yeah, I wanted to skim through this parks uh thing. I'm sure you've read it, the meetings minutes.
Um yeah, not in detail, but go for it.
It looks like Bob came into the parks meeting. He talks about an arborist to come in and trim trees. I know I think the limbs are all over the restroom or something. I don't know what he's talking about. So it looks like he's talking about an arborist and tree trimming.
Mm-hmm.
Down there below E. Then he says people are speeding through the park and we need speed bumps. Is that?
Has speed bumps? People just.
You can't stop people. They drive the way they're done.
Yeah.
That guy's job.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I was just wondering if you'd read through some of these um.
Yeah, you know, what's interesting is um that in reading it, that's the first I'd heard of any of it.
Right.
I reviewed all of it with Angie. All this has been addressed as far as Bob's concerned.
Yeah. Because I don't know how many blank work orders we've handed them that says, write what the problem is. Turn that at City Hall.
Yeah, because we.
I don't think he likes to write work orders.
He hadn't addressed any of this with staff before he went to the meeting.
Yeah, which is not really the correct order because he should have brought those to Angie as their soup as the parks host kind of organizer. Then we would have just had Public Works or Mitch or somebody accomplish it, so.
How slow did your radar wagon go, chief? And then I'm also, it wasn't just that. There's quite a bit of maintenance stuff, even the parks is mentioning at the lake too here.
About.
Noticed the cars out on the track on a different side that we all talked about. Of course, we haven't got the cables and the logs and the posts in, but there I don't know if it's a problem, but somebody's griping about it. They're parking out there on Spencer.
Yeah.
Um you've probably seen it. And then there's a dog issue. A leak in a pontoon maybe or something they're talking about here.
Yeah, that's being addressed. They're gonna do a scope, uh use a sewer camera to scope and see what's going on. And then I finally got the name of the company. We don't have any documentation here on what who put those in, anything. I don't know who was here at the time, but I can't find anything on a computer. I can't find it in a file. Um so I finally got the name of who installed them. I'm hoping maybe they have a Vernonia dock project file that we can get the schematic so we're not
two thousand.
Dreaming, you know, trying to figure out what's underneath there. We could actually see it and just go address the problem.
I think Mike was here when those went in, wasn't he?
Mike?
He was not coming in.
Oh, probably.
Quite a while.
Yeah. So I got the name, hopefully the the.
Twenty-one years ago.
And then public comments, I see Suzie Armstrong on page. Is it one? Oh, yeah, needing some signs because people are driving around the lake or something here.
That's not really true. She does not like to put the cable up because she likes the convenience of pulling her truck directly up to her trailer and people drove through where the cable should be up.
Oh.
And drove down to the dock. So to stop them from driving down to the dock, she got in her car and followed them there. And I said.
So they were the racer?
Put the cable up and don't follow them. Don't go do what you're telling them not to do to tell them not to do it like.
Did this happen after we had her scooped back or something?
Yeah, but she doesn't like the cable. It says, no, you can't get through here.
Oh.
So somebody was like, oh, I'll just drive myself right down this gravel path right to the dock. But if the cable's up, no one ever drives back there. So.
Is there a lock on the cable?
Yeah. But we've taken it down to when we come to dump gravel or whatever, we always put it back up. Well, it it's conveni- I get it. It's like a gate, but it's not as even as easy as a gate. I get that it's not convenient for her.
This is camping signs are confusing and hole in the road.
Those have all been addressed.
Yeah, that's all. This is all old.
And one kind of another one popped out at me. Steve Whitman was trying to make different arrangements. What does that mean? About our fee schedule?
I didn't know.
For the baseball for Spencer Park.
That's under B.
Jamboree fee schedule or something.
Six B two.
I didn't realize he was part of the parks or city council.
I don't know even, I don't even, was he at this meeting? Oh, he's not even at this meeting.
No, it just.
So that's someone's just saying something and they wrote it down weird.
Oh, that confused me and I was like, hmm, okay. So I just thought I'd ask you about.
I don't know even what that means. I haven't, Steve hasn't gone to any parks meetings. He's only about his trees.
Well, they're talking about Roger Smith and they're talking about how to change Jamboree to use the park and talking about kind of the whole reduction in fees. So I assuming it was part of that stuff, but it's kind of hard to decipher some.
I have no idea what that means, Jer.
Steve was a big part of pushing them to have to pay.
Right.
He was the one who really started all that.
Yeah.
I don't know what that's about.
Are we collecting any money down there?
For it's Spencer?
That's Spencer?
For what?
No, I mean the parking fees.
And we have to look.
No.
Check to see if they're paying.
I had a guy yesterday that was coming in to ride his bike was like, where do I pay at? Like the pay station right there. So I know he he went up there, acted like he was gonna pay, so.
Yeah. I'll have to ask Jeff to get or Ange to give us some detail on that.
And then they're.
Have the signs up.
Uh section eight, new business. They're talking about wanting staff to take care of that salmon, but I'm hearing our mayor went ahead and did it for us, so.
Well, staff called our mayor and said, what product were you using? And our mayor said, I'll just go do it.
Yeah. Appreciate that, yeah.
Kind of like.
It it it's not in very good shape and.
No.
I pressure washed it today and cleaned it up pretty good, but I and I've talked to Josette about it and I I'm gonna recommend that we put a solid red stain like I stained the kiosk with. I think that'll clean it up pretty good and maybe get another couple of years out of it. Looks a little better today.
So it's gonna be a spawned out salmon.
It's yeah, exactly, because the tail is pretty dark yet. I I I.
Is that in pitch?
Partly pitch and water. It's on the north side.
Oh.
And so I did clean it up pretty good.
Yeah, it does look a lot better. You can see definition at now where you.
I got a lot of the pitch off. Um but I'm gonna stain it in the morning, so. Yeah.
It'll be fine.
It'll look better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The big stump, the big bar uh.
Wind there.
Fork stump. I I would really recommend Coolmarm.
Yeah, I was trying to say that, but.
My head's stuffed up right now, so. Um I would recommend we we bore into it about a foot and see what if we can get any uh good material out of it. If we can, I I'd recommend that we come up with a plan and if we want to scar make a carving on it, we ought to better do it this year. So we could recommend that to the Parks Committee. Maybe you could take that to them, Grant.
Well, and I talked to Jason about putting that on his agenda to discuss. It either needs to be dealt with this year or it needs to just come out.
The other shorter one's pretty rotten.
Yeah, that could just get.
Be cut off. I did mention that to them and they.
That's not fun though, Grant. They only want fun things.
Right.
I suggested carbon a fisherman and then we'll put a pole in his hand and run a line over to the fish. Then then Christmas would put lights on it.
Oh, that'd be neat.
I say we just do a hack chainsaw V out of it till it rots away.
That'd be like Roy used to be, right?
Yes, oh, that's Christmas lights. And Roy.
Any other thing for the CA?
No, I just kind of wanted to briefly go through. That kind of stood out at me like, wow, that's a lot of stuff on there for the parks, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josette.
Mm-hmm.
Um, items from the mayor or
So, uh, I talked to you about it. Um, I'd like to get a small team together. It's looking like we'll probably do, depending on work schedules, but maybe a Friday if JR is off then. Or we can get some people out of the Parks Committee too, you know, maybe. Public Works Committee, depending on work schedules, but, uh, we want to do, take the crack silver down. We allocated some funding to buy the materials this year and seal up the cracks, all those cracks around the lake, about twelve hundred feet of them. Um, I went down, sprayed all the vegetation with vinegar and salt. I don't know if it's killing it very well, but there was, most everything's kind of dying on its own. This weather's early doing a number. Um, but anyhow, I, I want to just pass that by the rest of the members here and Is it, oh, Grant with his hip, that might be a problem. Or when are you going? You'd probably be going, I'm thinking probably later part of August is what we may be thinking.
After jamboree.
After jamboree.
I'll help if I can.
And, you know, part of it
Drive a truck with the air compressor hooked onto the back of it.
Yeah. Maybe we'd have the Public Works Crew, maybe two of them just run down there a day or two ahead and blow all the cracks out for it at the time.
Yeah.
And then
But we need probably kind of the safety person there to If we don't shut the trail down to keep people out of it, uh, we've got some, we've got some spray on material to cool and de-tack.
Some sand over it?
No, you spray this stuff. You just use a hose and sprayer and you spray over it and it de-tacks it.
Oh, okay.
And cools it enough that, uh, because I was afraid somebody would run a dog in there and then, oh, boy, a hot tar.
Would you put it night?
Yeah, we could.
You're lucky for that. Get your headlamps on.
I'm trying to accommodate city crew, you know, for they don't have to change a work day, but, you know, I mean, that, that's always a possibility too.
They're willing to
Shift the day
Pay off and work the Saturday to run it. Whatever.
I'm, I am available on Fridays.
Friday might be a spark.
Better day, maybe, but it's people.
Yeah, yeah, because weekends have been busy down there.
Yeah.
I mean, weekdays
On Saturdays.
Yeah.
So.
But yeah, we got the
Yeah, just let us know, Dale.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to work, write up a little work plan and
Yeah.
Talk to the city administrator a little more and then I'll try to get a date ahead so everybody can kind of confirm.
We'll be glad to help.
Let me know so I can post it.
Oh, because there'd be too many of us. Yeah, that's right.
I post, I can also add that please be respectful, stay off the trail, give us
Yeah.
private metrics.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because there's a potential for a quorum of
Oh, yeah.
council members discussing.
Potential as in there will be.
Yeah. But that's not a big deal. You're there doing a project. It's not like you're
Okay.
Yeah.
You're not discussing or making any decisions on this business.
Yeah.
Well, so, uh, and then on that crack ceiling, I think I've mentioned before, drive down Washington Avenue and see what they did there. It looks pretty good. I think that really is going to help save the streets. How much of that crack ceiling do we have? We have a pallet of it or?
We have, uh, half a pallet and a double sized pallet's getting shipped right now.
Well, how much do we think it'll take to do the mill pallet?
Um, my estimate was, I think they said the, well, what I did on the trail, I seen on the trail, it was way over a hundred feet per block.
Oh, so in the block, sure.
We're thinking twelve blocks or so, I think, for the
And the
It might take them. Some of them are pretty deep, but we got the rope material. That's where we're going to need some people going ahead and prepping.
I, I wouldn't mind some experience. I'm maybe able to retire and go to work for ODOT.
There you go. Do some cracks.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the regular sized pallet has thirty-five boxes on it and a, a jumbo pallet has seventy-five.
Oh, well, we're really set.
Yeah.
Is it expensive?
It is. It's like eighteen hundred bucks for
Pallet.
Eighteen ninety-nine plus a hundred and twenty-six dollars shipping for a seventy-five box pallet. So I think if you buy the seventy-five, you get them for like twenty-six bucks a box. If you buy the smaller one, you pay thirty-seven bucks a box. So you're saving eleven dollars a box just by ordering a bigger supply at one time.
Yeah, we're letting one inch cracks go or more out there. And that trail will be repaving that whole thing in ten years, so you kind of have to pay the money now to save it later, I guess.
Well, and it, you guys did originally do it. When was that? I lived across from the lake last time they did the crack ceiling on the cracks there.
Yeah, and we hired a contractor to do it and everybody right after that was like
Well, it went in.
Yeah, it synced in so bad.
So we got the half inch rope and so you just cut it and you lay as many deep as you need to of it.
Oh.
And you go over it so it fills that gap. And when you're pouring the hot tar, it also heats up the rope, so it fills that in.
It's like a backer, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like a sleeved, all the
And we won't be chintzy either. I mean, if we need to back up and hit one the second time, we can, you know, that's just if we see it slumping out on us.
We'll set the date up there. Web, I'll help.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's an interesting day. I think it'll be a project well done, you know, really. I, it is getting, where it is starting to become kind of a safety issue. There've been a few kids had mishaps with their little
Cars.
Yeah, they, yeah, I've seen one down there. They got hit the crack and it's getting too wide. They came to a abrupt stop.
Yeah.
Roller blades and skates would be a problem.
Yeah, the, well, and the little scooter wheels are only that big.
Yeah.
So you get in the cracks of one of those cracks and it's just like, boom, your wheel, you're almost flying forward. Yeah.
Thanks, Dale, for taking an interest in
No.
Yeah, we'll, we'll support you.
This is how this town works.
Yeah. Hey, any other?
Broken people.
Any other?
I do. I, I wrote something in honor of, uh, Mr. McNair. I'd like to read into the record, if you don't mind. Um, it's kind of blunt and, uh, honest and, uh, I think he would approve, so I'll just read it. I want to convey my deepest sympathies to the McNair family on the passing of Bruce McNair. Counselor McNair and I got off to a rocky start a few years ago after working together for two years improving Vernonia. I would say we found common ground on many issues, including the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery, which was the last meeting we held together. We had several nice, long telephone conversations recently, and he was always concerned with the city of Vernonia. He was proud of Vernonia and proud to have served it and us. The last thing Bruce said to me was, quote, "Donnie would make an excellent counselor." He may not be here tonight, but he will always be Counselor McNair. Respectfully, JR.
Thank you, JR. Yeah.
Missed my friend.
Known him for many years.
Yeah, top our back.
Look at Bruce nineteen seventy-three.
Up on the landing or?
Crown's all about. Yeah, I worked with him at Crown. Drove a log truck with Crown with him. Yeah, worked with his dad. Known him many years, like Dale. I too had a, last week I, he called me and I talked to him for about forty-five minutes. It's a good talk, so. We're gonna, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Action item summary.
Okay, I have that staff is tweaking the July twenty-six workshops to be the priorities work session. That staff's, staff's going to schedule the second meeting of every quarter will be forevermore the, the priorities work session for council and the city administrator. So the second Monday of every quarter month, if that makes sense, at six thirty.
That's good with me. I mean, we did really make an action on that, but
Well, everyone nodded, so I've been going with that. Um, August twenty-third work session at six thirty for the tree discussion. And the two letters for the, um, Bernardi and Kibbin. And then I didn't know, is there anything you wanted us to do with the topics from the floor tonight?
Oh.
Um, do you want to direct staff to?
Did staff know about this coming in?
Yes.
Yes, she's been arguing with Stephanie about the distance and all the committee all the committee resolutions say five, right, for the
Planning Commission is five miles and I'd like to make that also part of all the other committees.
Because they don't have one.
But Planning Commission is deciding land use inside the city. So it's actually surprising that ours allows anyone from outside the city to make those kinds of decisions. So I have argued many times against making that a further distance and
Three miles becomes five miles, becomes ten miles.
Redmond. And then you're deciding
Right.
From somewhere that you have no interest except to just decide what they're going to be able to do with their land. It doesn't, the problem is the decisions that a planning commissioner makes, if you're not living inside the jurisdiction, you're deciding what other people do, but it has no effect on yourself. So it's not like parks where you're using the parks and you're deciding how those should be used. There's Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm kind of, I don't like the idea of you having to argue with someone.
Well, that happens all the time, Grant.
I know. Thank you, but let's turn that around. They're arguing with you over, uh,
That's
They're debating the rule. Yeah, yeah.
I, I
I'm enforcing the rule and she's not been happy with me on many occasions.
Well, that's why we have rules and I'm sorry you had to be the brunt of that.
I hate turning people away, though, when we're begging people to sit on our boards and commissions.
Yeah, but it's the same way when, when airport had someone that was living in Redmond.
Yeah, well, we
Living where?
Maybe had somebody living out of town too there for a while.
Yeah.
But those ones don't have a rule prohibiting it.
And we would like the rule, we would like to pull the rule back into those and actually make a five mile maximum.
Go ahead, JR.
So my thoughts on it was, I liked her enthusiasm, but then it, the enthusiasm almost became pushy, to be honest with you. And then when she said she's into real estate and she lives out of town, that almost becomes a conflict of interest, right? When you run a real estate company, maybe her not, but some people might want favorable things for whatever.
Right.
So not saying that's the case, but then I'm also wondering if you, if five mi- what, where did five miles come from? It's either you're in the city or you're not, just like a counselor.
It's been that way.
I believe that, I believe when they did their ordinance, that was under the, when I was on council. Um, and it was the school district. They were trying to, they had interested people that lived within the school district boundary that wanted to be on the commission. Their kids went to school here. And so they wanted to accommodate somebody that has a Vernonia address, a nine seven zero six four address. Their children are in school here. They want to participate in the community and do, serve the community. And so they allowed for, is it two?
So
What is it now?
There's one.
One.
Position. And then if it goes unfilled, a position goes unfilled for six months, then it can be opened up to another person outside of the city not to be a majority.
Yeah, so that's what their thing says.
And there's a lot of people who want to vote on city stuff that live out of town, but they don't want to pay their taxes.
Right.
So, um.
I don't know how many, I think
Often against opening, changing it to accommodate someone.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think we should maintain our, our five mile. I don't think a, a variance is warranted here. I, I think it'd just be opening, I could put can of worms and
Plenty of other committees should be on.
Yeah, that's my sentiments also. I think she was very motivated to be a part of this community. I think she will.
Well, and we, we, Stephanie had, uh, said, go for the planning coun- county planning commission. You're in the county.
Yeah.
They, they need people to, you know.
Yeah.
Trying to come up with other ways she could, her enthusiasm could be met, but, so.
Well, as soon as you said five miles and wanted to stretch it to eight, my first thought was, why are we allowing the five miles really for planning?
Well, and that's the thing. So if you, if you think about it, on most of the committees, you have at least one person that's in that area, but not a, so you have like Carol, lives at Creek, Creekview, right off Flack, right, or down off
Simontary.
So that's, it's still a Vernonia address. She's still a Vernon- she grew up here. She's still a Vernonia person.
You say I'm five point one, I'm five.
Then too bad.
Can.
Yeah.
Fast rule.
That's, yeah.
And I think part of why the planning commission allows a little bit, well, for two reasons. One, there's probably someone on there who was within five, but they initiated it.
Are we clocking it by road miles or by air? Because she might qualify if you did it by air.
Oh, it's road.
No, it would be more than five.
But part, the other part is that the city's code also applies to the UGB. And so it
You have some property.
The UGB to be a part of the planning commission also.
Yeah, because if you just said city limits, then it wouldn't kick all the UGB.
You got one outside, right?
We do.
They do.
Where does this, where, where would the five mile start from the city hall?
No, I started it from the edge of town. She's still outside the five miles.
Right.
So.
I was going to say, it seems like when they say it's twenty-five miles to the city, that's the city hall.
Anyway, that was my thought. It sounds like nobody's here wanting to really change the boundaries.
I don't think we should change.
I appreciate your support.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure you
Yeah. Anything else for action items?
Did I forget anything?
I don't think so.
I yawn because I'm tired.
I've done that three times.
Well, um, thank you for putting this together, staff.
We put on the city webpage and the city Facebook.
Um, I'll adjourn this meeting at, um, eight fifty PM. Meeting adjourned.